Good evening, everyone. We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Sergeant Arms, has the lobby been attended to?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. We request that all electronic devices be turned off or put in silent mode. Also, please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. I am pleased to welcome the August 5th, 2025 School Board Meeting. The time is 6:00 PM and this meeting is hereby called to order. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes a moment of silence, pledge of allegiance, acknowledgements, recognitions, public comment, consent action items, which include: two items under Board Office, two items under Academic and Student Services, five items under School Choice Administration, eight items under Business Services, one item under Human Resources, two items under Safety, Security, and Fleet Operations, nine items under Facility Operations, and four items under Good to the Order Other Business. Board members, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll motion to approve.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, move by Ms. Chaviano, second by Ms. Jordan. Please record your vote. Motion carries seven zero. As is the custom of the board, I will lead us in a moment of silence. After that, Mrs. Jada Langford Fleming will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Next item on the agenda is the character word for August. The character word for August is responsibility, accountability for your personal choices. The design displayed on the screen was created by Samantha Puron, a sixth-grade student at Varsity Lakes Middle School. Great job, Samantha. Now, we're going to move on to Item C, recognitions. Board members, please join us in the pit.
Good evening. I'll be reporting on Odyssey of the Mind, the regional, state, and world competitions. Odyssey of the Mind is an international educational program that provides creative problem-solving opportunities for students from kindergarten through college. Team members apply their creativity to solve problems that range from building mechanical devices to presenting their own interpersonal literacy classics, and the students develop problem-solving, critical thinking, teamwork, math, language arts, science writing, engineering, and performing art skills. Each team is allowed one student from another school to compete on their team as well. They then bring their solutions to competition on the local, state, and world level. This year, regional competition was held in February, state competition was held in April, and the world finals took place in Michigan on May 21st to the 24th, 2025. We would like to recognize the following teams for their Odyssey of the Mind accomplishments. When I read your name, please join me up here at the podium. North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts, the team from NFMAA placed first at the regionals, third at the states, and placed thirteenth out of thirty-eight teams at the world finals. They competed in Problem One, the OM Amazing Race, Division Two. The team engineered a vehicle that transported one of the students through a course with obstacles to overcome while acting out their team-created skit about traveling through the layers of the earth but learning to trust others and create a lasting friendship, which is a more valuable prize than setting the world record. The team is coached by Mary Ann Hodges and Ashley Weeks. The team members include Lillian Downing, sixth-grade North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts; Mallory Hodges, sixth-grade North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts; Jackson Nicom, fifth-grade North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts; Mackenzie Weeks, fourth grade, The Bay Shore School; Matthew Weeks, sixth grade, North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts. Congratulations. And we're not done. North Fort Myers High School, the team from North Myers High School placed first at regionals, third at the states, and placed twenty-fifth out of thirty-three teams at the world finals. They competed in Save Me the Structure, Division Three. The team engineered a fifteen-gram balsa wood structure capable of supporting over four-hundred pounds, showcasing strength through lightweight design. Alongside the structural challenge, they created a performance that incorporated several handcrafted balsa wood animals. Drawing inspiration from their home in southwest Florida, their original script centered around the environment impact of hurricanes and pollution on local wildlife. In line with sustainability theme, they built most of their props using recycled materials, blending creativity, engineering, and environmental awareness into a cohesive and impactful presentation. The team is coached by Jignasia Kathurman. Team members included Maya Kathuram, ninth-grade North Fort Myers High School; Reina Kathurman, ninth-grade North Myers High School; Cole Hee Deeds, ninth-grade North Fort Myers High School; Hope Felikin, ninth-grade North Fort Myers High School; and Catherine Hernandez, eighth-grade North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts. Congratulations.
Okay. Joining us again at the lectern tonight is Danielle Knapp, Coordinator for Teaching and Learning. This year Innovation Convention U.S. Nationals was held at the Henry Ford in Dearborn, Michigan from June 4th through June 6th. Among the many talents, young inventors across the country were students from southwest Florida and two of our very own earned high honors. From Dunbar High School, Baby Beats 2.0 earned the Best Prototype Awards created by student Nishini Fernando. Is she here? She's not here. Oh, my gosh. I'm sure we'll see her again. The school just started. From Fort Myers High School, Dextoria Revolutionizing Assistive Technology received second place, designed by student Girvar, and I just, I know I asked you how to say your name, and I just said it wrong, Sharma, and actually, he just graduated last year as well. Congratulations. Nishini and Girvar, along with the administrators from Dunbar High School and Fort Myers High, who are in attendance, please come forward, which everyone just did, into the pit for the photo. On behalf of the board and the superintendent, we are proud to recognize and congratulate you both for your truly world-stem accomplishments. Thank you for representing the school district of Lee County with such innovation, passion, excellence at this prestigious academic competition. Thank you very much.
Joining us once again at the lectern tonight is Danielle Knapp, Coordinator of Teaching and Learning. The 2025 Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair was held in Columbus, Ohio from May 10th through the 16th, 2025. Among the talented young scientists representing southwest Florida, two of our very own received high honors. From Fort Myers High School, the project titled "Optimizing Random Force Algorithms for Autism Prediction", wow. "Enhancing Diagnostic Accuracy Through Machine Learning" earned Presidential Scholarships from Long Island University. A merit-based scholarship valued at forty thousand two-hundred-and-forty-eight per year. This exceptional project was created by Tonish or Tenis? Mahar and Gabriel Centran. Tonish and Gabriel, along with any administrators from Myers High School, are in attendance. Please come forward to receive your certificates and join the board members. Superintendent and your school administrators in the pit for photos.
Great job, everyone. This is why we do what we do. So, it's always exciting to see all the celebrations and achievements of our students. Thank you, everyone. Next up on the agenda is public comment, so I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Huffman, if you can go through public comment, Michael.
Thank you, Chair. School Board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. Please complete a public comment card and put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comments are posted in the back and will be made from the podium in the front center aisle. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on district issues such as duties, responsibilities, decisions, and the general operation of the district. The school board is viewpoint-neutral during public comment. We ask that decorum be kept and respect be shown, which is what is expected when a government agency conducts official business. Therefore, abusive language, defined as swearing, use of profanity, or name-calling is prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, booing, or a display of temper during public comment is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order by the board chair or the board attorney. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 0169.1 and may be removed from the chambers by the Sergeant at Arms. Also, per Board Policy 0169.1, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are twenty speakers, two minutes if there are thirty speakers, and one minute if there are thirty-one speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour and sixty speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call your names, five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's direction when lining up. Mr. Chair, there are currently seven speakers that wish to address the board this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Please ensure you have completed a public comment card to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. The cards are located with staff in the hallway. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but has not filled out a public comment card? Okay. Seeing none? Mr. Attorney, please proceed to public comment.
If the following individuals can please line up: Denise Eberly, Kathy Ween, Bill Jones, Sergio Cruz, Katrina Salak.
Hello again. The Lee County School District continues to demonstrate-
Ma'am, if you could please state your name for the record.
Can you stop the clock? Denise Eberly. The Lee County School District continues to demonstrate a pattern of poor planning that disproportionately affects students in Lehigh Acres. The proposed NNN High School project in Alva is the latest and most costly example despite overwhelming evidence that the need lies elsewhere. Originally estimated at one hundred and forty million, the NNN project is now expected to exceed one hundred and sixty million. This increase is driven by twenty-two-point-five million in additional infrastructure costs solely because the selected site in Alva lacks the necessary infrastructure, roads, utilities, water services, which now must be built using public funds, our taxpayer dollars. These expenses would not be required if the school were built in Lehigh Acres where infrastructure is already in place and capable of supporting the project. Despite this, the district has chosen to move forward in rural area with sparse development rather than build in the area where the largest student population and the greatest need. This decision is not only fiscally irresponsible but educationally harmful. Lehigh students are currently bused out of their community to attend schools like Riverdale and Gateway. These are not short trips. They are long daily commutes for hundreds of students. Yet, Alva, which already has Riverdale High School, is being prioritized for another high school while Lehigh, home to the fastest-growing population, remains underserved. Further, if Lehigh students get a school or schools where they live, they will shift out of Riverdale and Gateway, opening hundreds of seats. The district's ongoing justification that students are already being bused is deeply problematic. This is not a justification. It's an admission of failure. Busing Lehigh students outside their community should not be normalized. It's a symptom of a broken, inequitable system. Building a new high school in Lehigh would immediately leave overcrowding at Riverdale and Gateway and allow students to remain in their community. Even more concerning, the district appears to be disregarding its own policies. Phase one of the site selection process exists precisely to prevent these types of missteps, yet that policy is being ignored. The process is supposed to evaluate the suitability of the site and ensure that community needs and costs are properly weighed. Here, those factors have been blatantly dismissed. Dr. Christopher Neer, Superintendent of Lee County Schools, has publicly stated that the project can be halted at any time. That acknowledgement makes it clear that continuing with this project is a choice, not a requirement. There's still time to correct course. Finally, it's worth noting that other projects in Lee County have been relocated during phase one when was determined that the original site no longer made sense. The NNN high school should be no different. The community is not asking for special treatment. We are asking for fair data-driven decision-making. The NNN project is the latest example of a larger pattern.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Your time is up. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kathy Ween. I spoke at last week's meeting requesting that the district reconsider cutting its two prevention specialist teaching positions. In light of the district's right-sizing strategy, having two prevention specialists for a district with well over ninety thousand students would be better than what we have, two thousand students would be better than what we have now, which is none. In 2023, Juul Labs, Inc. accepted responsibility for the increase in youth vaping and began making payments to thousands of school districts to remediate that. This was because Juul's marketing practices targeted youth and due to the extremely high levels of nicotine found in Juul products. Our district was granted a settlement amount of over two-point-two million from this class-action suit, and we still have over five-hundred thousand dollars coming in. With one Juul pod having as much nicotine as a whole pack of cigarettes, our kids didn't stand a chance. The Use of Settlement Proceeds section of the settlement says, quote, "The settlement proceeds are intended to be used for compensatory restitution or remediation," unquote. They didn't list or define specifically how it must be used in order to provide us with the flexibility on how to use the settlement proceeds to address the problem of youth vaping and nicotine addiction, but the money is to be used for this purpose. Using Juul money on vape detectors is counterintuitive. Many experts on youth vaping, like the American Lung Association, do not support using vape detectors as a strategy to reduce vaping in schools because too often it leads to a punitive response rather than recognizing vaping as an addiction. It's not about catching students vaping then punishing them. It's about giving these students, who very well may be addicted to nicotine, the education and help they need to quit. Providing students the tools they need so that they choose not to use at all is called prevention. Dr. Carlin has said that school safety is a top priority and she'll have a zero-tolerance policy to bullying, and that is an admirable goal. As prevention specialists, we've created educational resources so students will know what to do if they're being bullied and how to report it. We provide presentations for students, parents, and staff to teach what constitutes bullying and how to recognize it, as well as videos, newsletters, and handouts about bullying. For the last two years, my colleague and I have done bullying prevention training for the City of Cape Coral summer youth camp staff at their request so that they can recognize bullying should it occur. They look to us as experts. Again, I implore the district to fund and restore our prevention specialist positions for the good of our students. Benjamin Franklin said it best, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." Thank you for your leadership.
Good evening. My name's Bill Jones. I'm the Vice President for Waste Pro in southwest Florida. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. So, I'm here on a happy note, I think, as the school season starts for everybody. We are, with Waste Pro, we are celebrating our twentieth year providing excellent service to the residents and businesses in Lee County. And we talked a little bit about it internally and thought that, you know, the best thing to do would be to celebrate with our partners in education. We're supporters of education, have been since we've been here, are throughout the state of Florida. We believe that an educated community is a vibrant, growing community, and we want to continue along that trend. So, we decided that we were going to donate backpacks to students, backpacks full of gear, full of school supplies, things like that. And we initially thought we would do twenty for our twenty-year anniversary. And then we said, well, you know, heck, we're going to be here another twenty years, right? So, let's do forty. So, we have forty backpacks we're going to donate tonight. I'm sporting the latest Bluey backpack. That's my granddaughter's favorite, so. And then with me tonight are Tyler Bartlett and Lisa Casado from Waste Pro. They were the ones that really came up with this idea. They didn't want to talk tonight. They wanted me to do it because I looked better with the Bluey backpack, I guess. But they really were the brains behind this, so I want to thank them for their participation, and that's all I had to say tonight. So, thank you for the opportunity to continue to help out.
The following additional individuals can please line up: James Kennedy and Amanda Cochrane.
Good evening. My name is Sergio Cruz, and I'm a parent advocate, a dad on a mission, and a director of a nonprofit serving individuals with disabilities in southwest Florida. It's no secret that I have my issues with how the district handles students with disabilities, the way they prioritize and their urgency towards the gaps, the huge gaps within that subgroup. I'll keep it brief tonight because I just wanted to, you know, bring attention to another year that we failed our students with disabilities in this district. You know, the district boasted about having a B-rating within the district, but when you look at the subdata for students with disability, second year in a row that it's a D. And that has been ongoing consistently for several years. I know, as school board members, you have little to no control over the day-to-day operations of the district in those regards, but one thing that you do have control over is every year, the student, the school improvement plans come across your desk. I would implore you that this year, take a hard look at that because these are documents that are supposed to address these gaps at each individual school level. The administrators have their own discretion to obviously run the school as they see fit, which I agree with, but a lot of times, when you look at these school improvement plans, they're not prioritizing these students. And I feel like that's why we are consistently failing these students with disabilities. You couple that D-rating with the latest internal audit that doesn't speak great volumes to kind of- You couple that derating with the latest internal audit that doesn't speak great volumes to kind of how we are servicing these students. And I just would implore you to have open discourse and conversations with a lot of the parents of these students with disabilities. Currently, right now, really the only recourse we have for that is the quote-unquote ESC advisory, which doesn't really allow for that type of conversation to be had. It's more of a teach-and-take scenario than it is really a kind of conversation piece. So I just would like to employ you that when those things come across your desk, which I believe sometime in September, or I think you might vote on them in October, if you was just to really take a look at them, because a lot of the school improvement plans, and I looked at a lot of them for a lot of the schools, it's hard to find any kind of priority that addresses that issue. And so I implore you to engage with me, have some discourse with me and others that champion this population. And I look forward to collaborating, I think that collaboration is always the best move in this situation. And I wish you guys a great beginning to the school year, so thank you.
I think I'm next. Not sure, okay. Katrina Southcar, and I am coming today to talk to Dr. Carlin specifically. Just wanted to overview sort of the core priorities that were declared, you know, in your campaign and things like that. The ensuring of safe schools, the increasing of student achievement, the fiscal responsibility, the teacher recruitment and retention, and the empowering of parents' voices in education. And I watched the last meeting as you turned to the board and kind of vision cast that across them. And I think it's going amazing. I think that all of those things are in line and they're cooking. And you're on target, you're going to achieve the things you open the meetings with every single time, it's a masterclass. What I want you to maybe consider going forward is now that that's sort of rolling, schools starting, can we look back at some of the things that have happened, like the disbanding of the committees, the different items where we've done huge studies and maybe not followed through and maybe just even declare some of those initiatives no longer a priority like proximity schools or something? Can we look at the bus situation? Can we look at the hard stuff? Because I know it happened before you, but at the same time, it might be good to go backwards and sort of scoop that up and deal with it. Once, of course, everything's moving forward, which I think it is. So specifically though, as it relates to NNN, the school board claims that the new school is needed to serve the East zone students, not developers. Utility infrastructure is standard and extensions are planned solely for the school, not for private development. Problem with that is, that we're looking at, my experts, our experts, we're looking and we're saying the school would use about ten thousand six hundred gallons of water daily. Yet it's getting a five hundred thousand dollar, or five hundred thousand gallon tank. That's ninety-four times the need. Even malls and high rises don't need more than two hundred and fifty thousand gallons, so why the excess? Only a hundred and thirty-five homes actually exist nearby and surrounding developments remain speculative. At a high level, the schools should be where the students live. We have overcrowding in only three of the schools in the east, Riverdale's actually under eighty percent by our experts forecasting, after they've extrapolated numbers. We should have a look at that and ask ourselves, if we did David and Joel, could we just relieve the busing to the three schools that are actually at a hundred, over a hundred? Because they would, instead of busing out, they would just walk to school or drive very short distances instead of seven miles, all the way down to eighty. For why? So that's kind of where I'm at, thank you.
Good evening, my name's James Kennedy. I'm actually here to talk about two topics that, again, they might seem unrelated, but one is the location of the NNN school, right? Sure you guys are sick of hearing about it, although you've put a lot of work in the last couple of days in answering comments, establishing a landing page that wasn't there a few days ago. You know, it's appreciated, that gives us something that we can see, we can work from, we can take those points and evaluate, that's appreciated. You know, so that's good work. But the things that I wanted to talk about addressing that, because I still think it's in the wrong place. And the reason why is, you know, with the associated support stuff that goes in, right? The bus driving and everything else, and I know that you've improved on the bus driving, but you went from nine hundred bus drivers down to around five hundred. And I know that we put out a little bit on how the busing was going to change, but, you know, how many bus drivers have we improved? How many do we need? Where are these numbers, you know, where can we kind of see these to evaluate them? You know, the public, the taxpayers that are footing the bill for these extra transport costs, we should be able to see those. So by placing a school like NNN out at the farthest reaches and not at the more central location, we're increasing fuel costs, we're increasing driver costs, their time, wear and tear on the buses, right? These are all the things that should be part of the calculus that, I mean, honestly, they're not. We're looking at the capital cost solely and that seems to be a mistake. Now, most of you weren't on the board when these decisions were made originally, but that doesn't mean that you have to hold on to errors that were made and carry them forward. This is your opportunity, and we've said it many times, this is your opportunity to take a look at the mistakes. If there are mistakes, acknowledge them, correct them, don't carry them forward, right? This is where you deliver on the promises made when you ran for your positions to really support the taxpayers and the students of the county. You have one of the largest budgets of anyone in the county. All we're asking is to get the most bang for our buck, right? We keep talking about how we've improved the quality of the schools. Well, Florida, you know, as a whole, is forty-first in the country. Where are we actually ranked as a school district? And how are we supporting those things from the bottom up, right? Spending our money the most effectively. If we're not spending it correctly on bus drivers, support staff, and our teachers, then we're not getting the most bang for our buck. So again, look at how this affects.
Thank you for your comments, sir, your time is up.
Good evening, Amanda Cochran. It is well-known and deeply frustrating fact that Lee High Acres has consistently been sidelined for years by both the county and the school district when it comes to receiving the services it rightfully deserves. The ongoing push to build the new high school in Alva rather than in Lee High Acres, where the vast majority of the students who will attend the school actually live, only highlights this neglect. There are numerous red flags surrounding the school district's decision to pursue the Alva location. Using, quote, "projected growth" as justification for placing a major school in a rural undeveloped area rather than in the already densely populated community of Lee High Acres is, to me, indefensible. This rationale fails to account for the current urgent needs of Lee High students, many of whom who've spent years learning in portables due to overcrowding and underinvestment. Claiming that this is the fastest path forward does not hold up under scrutiny, especially when the district has ignored Lee High's needs for decades. If speed was truly the goal, why has this community waited so long for a proper school? At the very least, the public deserves a full and transparent cost analysis comparing the Alva site and the Lee High site. We need to know exactly how many millions could be saved by building the school where the students actually live and where infrastructure already exists. We are not asking for special treatment, we're asking for fairness, accountability, and responsible stewardship of public funds. The students of Lee High Acres deserve better, despite a well-produced video from the district, one that not only contains inaccuracies but that is deeply offensive to our community. Despite the launch of the Q&amp;A page on the district's website within the last few days, filled with also misleading information, claims I'm more than willing to address with each of you. Despite being told by an elected board member that if our community doesn't like where the district is placing schools, we can just move. And despite another elected board member claiming that productive public engagement has been disrupted by, quote, "misinformation" and "resistance" from, quote, "certain individuals." We continue to stand and advocate for responsible, transparent decisions from the leaders entrusted with our tax dollars and our children's education. Let me be clear, the information that we've presented is factual, thoroughly documented, and sourced directly from the data provided by the district itself. We're not spreading misinformation, we're holding our leadership accountable using your own numbers. District Five is my home, I'll continue to advocate for all of District Five, to include the underserved areas. Placing thousands of students, if we set aside major concerns, lack of infrastructure, environmental impact, all of those things, what should rise above all is student safety, it's not hypothetical. In May of two thousand fifteen, my family had the heartbreaking responsibility of standing beside loved ones who lost their senior on Joel Boulevard and very near Tuckahoe. And to this day, they live with a very permanent and real pain from that day. To this day, there's no immediate plans to improve those roadways and without real upgrades. It's not a question of if a tragedy will happen, it's when. We can't afford to gamble with our.
Thank you for your comments, your time is up. Mr. Chair, that concludes public comment. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Thank you, everyone, for your comments, they're always appreciated, we love to hear feedback from the public. Before we go on, staff had asked me for board members if you could please refresh your board docs, just to make sure we're logged in. While we're doing that, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which will be approval of consent action items. Just let me know when everyone's good to go. Mr. Ribble? Ms. Jordan? Are you good? Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to make sure on that. Okay, next is approval of action items in the agenda under consent. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We're expected to review all the material and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshop with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion on your unfinished business? I will start with Ms. Juvenelli.
I have none, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ribble?
I have none.
Ms. Jordan?
I have none.
Mr. Persons?
I have none.
Okay, Mrs. Langford Fleming?
I have none.
Okay, Ms. Javiano?
I have none.
I have one, item F2, approval of employment contract with Kathy DePree Bruno, I'll be asking on a poll on that, so. Okay. Board members, do I have a motion to approve the action items in our consent agenda except for item F2?
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, I have a second with Ms. Jordan. Okay, move by Mr. Ribble, second by Ms. Jordan, please record your vote. Okay, consent action items outside of F2, pass seven zero. At this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Quick, can he come up to the dais then? And then I'll add, oh, oh, sorry, sorry, Madam Superintendent, if you wish to address any administrators with new positions, my apologies, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's my pleasure to introduce Michelle Hoick, who is our new Assistant Principal at Spring Creek Elementary, congratulations. We're very proud of you and look forward to the fantastic work you're going to do in partnership with Ms. Fiora over at Spring Creek Elementary, you guys are a great team, thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, congratulations. Okay, now we're going to move on to item F2. Dr. Carlin, please read your recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it is recommended that the board approve the employment contract with Kathy DePree Bruno Esquire BCS with an ending term of June thirty, two thousand twenty-seven, under the terms and conditions as discussed by the board. This contract will supersede all previous agreements approved by the board.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Is there a motion to adopt Dr. Carlin's recommendation?
I'll make the motion to adopt the recommendation.
Okay, move by Ms. Ribble? Second by Ms. Jordan. Welcome to dais again, Mr. Quick, I'm going to ask you if you could do a quick overview, we just did get a document in. Okay, I was actually going to ask something, but yeah, do we need to get to public comment on that?
I was thinking of discussing.
Okay, because, yeah, we were, yeah, it was already, yeah, that's why I didn't address it. I appreciate your vigilance, thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask real quick if you give a quick overview, Mr. Quick, then I don't know about you, I am going to ask for just a brief recess in place. I just want to review the document that was recently uploaded, if that's all right. So if that's all right, can we proceed like that? Go, go ahead.
Can we have him walk us through?
Yeah, that's what I was just asking.
Thank you.
Then, can we?
Yes.
I just want to double check.
I'm going to agree.
So, yeah, if you can walk us through, and then I'd like to take a brief recess in place.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, Attorney Quick.
Yep, absolutely, good to see everybody again. So, yeah, I apologize, we just got the document to you that was working between the break when we broke until now, was just able to get the draft to you. I will be honest, I do need to go back through to make sure, the formatting was a little weird and I have to make sure that there's not internal inconsistencies where it refers to other sections. So I do have to just double check on that, but the substance is really what's important, not the Scrivners items. So when we broke last, there were a couple of, from the workshop, there were a couple of issues that were still outstanding that we were talking about. One of them had to do, or I guess the two biggest ones really had to do with termination, whether it was by supermajority or majority, and then severance, whether it was a full, flat twenty weeks, or whether it was something that was up to twenty weeks. I spoke with Kathy, her and I talked about this at length. She is willing to reduce the amount of the severance, hearing what some of the school board members talked about earlier, from twenty weeks to eighteen weeks, and then would also agree to remove the supermajority, so it would just be a simple majority of the board to terminate. So it would, the agreement, at least as drafted, I wanted to at least have an agreement presented to you all as drafted, includes a revision to that simple majority to terminate. And if she is terminated without cause, it would provide for a severance of eighteen weeks. Ms. Langford Fleming, just to answer one of your questions before you had asked about if she would get any benefits, I know I answered that. There is one item I want to mention. There is, your school board policy does give employees who leave, like accrued vacation time, things like that. So that's not benefits, like health benefits, but I did want to make sure that if she were to have any accrued vacation time or sick time under your policy, that is something that would also be included, that's, as I understand, it's consistent with the remainder of your other employees. The, that was really the remaining issue, we drafted language, it was in terms of the delineating the school board attorney and the chief staff attorney. It was virtually identical to what I read to you all in the workshop. She just cleaned it up a little bit from then until now. And the remainder of that, I think we had talked about the other issues, those are really the only outstanding issues. The one item that we hadn't talked about that Kathy brought up when we were meeting in there was a language about a remote work policy, but she advised that you all now have a remote work policy. I guess that was a holdover from before. So she had recommended that be removed so that the office of legal services or the office of the school board attorney will be done consistent with whatever the board policy is on remote work. So that's the only change that we did not, that is different than what we talked about before with the addition of these other items. Mr. Chair, did you want me to go over the other items that we talked about earlier today? So that the public is aware of what the other items of discussion were?
Yes, Attorney Quick.
The, so, just for the public there, we met earlier today in the workshop, there were really kind of seven key, what I'll call key items that we had talked about. The first one I just touched on just now, which was whether to include language in the contract about the legal structure of the school board attorney's office and the chief staff attorney. The second item- The second item had to do with what I'll call outside work items, which is when, if, if your school board attorney is seeking to give a speech or something like that, whether or not she needed to seek approval to do that when it was outside of work hours. The third item, it has to do with the termination provision, it currently requires a supermajority to terminate, and there was a discussion about whether or not to, to go from supermajority to majority, majority being, simple majority being just four out of seven. There was also a, the current contract, there was also a discussion about whether the contract would have what, what we in the legal community call an evergreen provision, which is an automatic renewal provision, so that if it's not terminated by a certain date, it will automatically renew, and then there was also some language that was put in there, or that was being proposed to be discussed as to whether, if, if that was taken out, whether it would be, it would just roll over and renew on a month-to-month basis, as opposed to a, a full renewal. The fifth and sixth items dealt with salary, the number, number five was whether or not your school board attorney would be provided with automatic salary increases consistent with the other, I can't remember the term that you all, other administrative staff, and whether it would be consistent with that, and then there was also a request for a salary increase to 212,000 and for it to be retroactive. The last item had to do with severance, and the, if she, if your school board attorney is terminated without cause, what severance, if any, she would be entitled to, again, this only applies to if it's, she's terminated without cause, it would not apply if she terminates the agreement through retirement or something like that, would not apply if she's terminated for cause, and would also not apply if this contract just simply does not renew and just terminates on its own terms. So, those were the items that we talked about, and, and consistent with what the discussion was during the workshop, and what I had laid out immediately before, that was the draft that I was able to put together. Again, I would ask, if you all are going to approve it, I would ask if you create a caveat that allows for any Scrivener's corrections that be made, just because, you know, I didn't have a chance to go, usually I go through it and I have a ruler and I go line by line by line to make sure I'm not missing anything, I, given the short timeframe, I just was not able to do that, so I, I don't want you all to have a contract that might have a reference to a paragraph that doesn't exist, or wrong paragraph, so that would be my only question, it would be non-substantive changes, obviously, just Scrivener's issues, I would, I would just ask, ask that to make sure you have the contract that, that is clean for everyone.
Thank you, Attorney Quick, I appreciate that. As I said, I'm going to ask to go to a recess in a moment, during that recess, I'm going to ask Superintendent Carlin, could you ask your staff to get us updated fiscal impact numbers based on those 18 weeks for us, please?
Will do.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. The last thing before I go to recess is not go to discussion now, but does anyone have any questions at the moment for Attorney Quick? And I'd ask Attorney Quick if you could, you know, if anyone has any questions individually, they can address them. Mr. Ribble?
Yeah, under the benefit question, she would qualify for Cobra though, correct?
If, yes, if she's terminated for, without cause, yes, I believe Cobra laws would kick in, so that, there's nothing you can really do about that, though.
Anything else up here before I go to recess? Okay, we're going to take a brief recess to review, thank you, everyone.
Just wanted to check with the individual board members if everyone is ready to proceed. There is one item that I wanted to mention that I... Looks like I got head nods from everybody that we're ready to proceed.
Yes, sir. No, please. Okay, yes, I'm ready for it. Yeah.
Okay, we are gonna go back into the meeting and the time is 7:03 PM. I will turn it back over to Superintendent Carlin, Attorney Quick, please.
Yes, sir. So, there was a request right before the recess for the total cost of severance, should the option of eighteen weeks be exercised, that total amount, and I do believe the board has this worksheet in front of them, but if you would insert 106,377. I've also sent that to you via email, so you have that. And then the total annual cost, which is the last line on that worksheet you received, is 434,858. So, that is the total annual cost for eighteen weeks.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Attorney Quick, if you can proceed, please, and address some of the items.
Okay, yeah. So, before I get to if there's any questions, I did want to mention that there was, is one provision in there that does need to still be added. In the quick turnaround, I apologize, in section five, there was also a sentence that would read, "But in no event shall Mr. Bree Bruno be entitled to a salary greater than that received by the superintendent." That would be consistent with what we discussed earlier. That would be added into paragraph five. Also, I wanted to remind everybody, if this is approved, once it's signed and finalized, this would supersede and would replace the current contract that you have with your school board attorney. And the effective date is, if it's approved today, the effective date would be today, and all of the terms of it would be, you would be operating under those terms going forward.
Thank you, Attorney Quick. And before we get to any discussion, I just want to confirm with the board, knew that if we do pass this contract tonight, just taking Mr. Quick's provision, that if there's any scrivenor errors, we'd be all right to have those adjusted, as long as it doesn't, nothing to contend.
Yeah, I would ask that, and as well as in the motion, if there's a motion to include the language I read about the provision on the not exceeding the superintendent's salary.
So, no objection from the board on that? Okay. Now, I'm going to open up to discussion, please, if anyone has anything. Mr. Persons?
Yeah, I think the contract shows a good compromise from the board and the attorney, and I want to thank Attorney Quick for his work of mediating all that. I'm sure it's a lot like herding cats, as they say. So, thank you for your effort.
Anyone else? I mean, I'm gonna give comments, but I don't want to jump in front of anyone else. Ms. Langford Fleming?
So, I just want to clarify regarding the severance, that it is, the eighteen weeks is regardless of whether or not the attorney is employed by someone else at that point in time. It's eighteen weeks. I just want to make sure, you know, I'm not sure that the public listened to our workshop, so if you'll clarify that.
Yes, that as part of agreement to give up the, I guess, the language in there requiring a supermajority, Mr. Bree Bruno indicated that she would only be willing to get what I call a flat severance, which is, yes, it's eighteen weeks regardless of if she obtains due to full employment or gainful employment before that time, yes.
And in your experience, is that comparable to other attorney contracts?
It's, yeah, it's not uncommon. I mean, each contract is, has its own terms, but there are plenty that have that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And there are others that have what you were talking about as well, which is, you would, if they obtain employment before, then it would get deducted against it. So, both of them are common.
I'm much more, I mean, I'm much more comfortable with eighteen weeks as long as, you know, if he or she in this position were to obtain other employment, I'm, I guess the way I look at it is, did you say 108,000? 108,000 would be this new eighteen-week severance?
Correct. Well, it would be 106,377 for a total cost, for the total annual cost, including salary benefits, et cetera, of 434,858.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I guess I'm looking at this as 108,000. It'd be one thing if he or she wasn't able to find employment. It's another thing if they are being employed. Also, this, I mean, 108,000 is two brand-new, 106, excuse me, 106,000 is two brand-new teacher salaries. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Persons, then followed by Ms. Jordan.
I don't follow how someone making 212,000 plus 168,000, how that comes to $400,000. So, what additional benefits do you have?
All the benefits, yes. The paid-out vacation time, the retirement, social security, health and life, all of that. Yes. And that's in the worksheet that was provided for you.
Right. But I mean, they're entitled to that anyway, so, right.
In accordance with the contract. What you all approve in terms of contract is what dictates...
Well, most of our employees get their approved vacation time and...
Vacation and sick, that is true, yeah. And there's, yeah, their investment account and some of the other things. So, just as they're delineated, some employees would not get that, the retirement investment account. They would have FRS, but not, not something beyond that.
Was that it, Mr. Persons? Thank you, sir. Ms. Jordan?
I was just gonna remind, this is, if the attorney was terminated for, no, just because, for the heck of it. It's not because they've done something wrong, it's just the fact that, oh, we're done, here you go, see you later. That, that's where that eighteen, eighteen weeks now would come in, where I believe that by statute, it's, you could go up to twenty anyway, but I just wanted to put that out there as well.
Anyone else have any other comments at this time?
I'll proceed with my comments. First off, Attorney Quick, thank you so much for being able to go through this in such a quick amount of time. I appreciate the back-and-forth. I appreciate as well Attorney Bree Bruno being willing to work with us. I truly do mean that. And again, as I've said throughout these meetings, and I know you probably get all sick of me with it, it's not about the performance of Attorney Bree Bruno. I really appreciate what she brings to the table and everything she's done for us, so. But again, I have to look at it for me from a philosophical level. So, as I said before, I look at it that all of us up here, including the superintendents, we serve at the pleasure of the public. The board attorney and the board auditor serve at the pleasure of the board, and the employees serve at the pleasure, the other employees serve at the pleasure of the superintendent. That's how I look at my governmental philosophy. So, I am not comfortable paying out a guarantee of eighteen weeks or $106,000 of a severance, no matter what happens on that. Again, under the law, we could, as I said, in any other circumstance, we could obviously negotiate that. I am not comfortable doing that, and I will be a no vote on this. Thank you.
Are we ready to proceed to vote, then? Anyone else? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Just give me one moment. Ms. Juvenelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ribble?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Persons?
Yes.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Nay.
Ms. Chaviano?
Nay.
And I'm a no. Motion carries for three. Okay. Attorney Quick, could you please follow up, obviously, with our staff and Attorney Bree Bruno and make whatever, you know, necessary changes to implement, including any scrivenor issues?
Absolutely, and I would just like to thank you all for, you know, I love working with you all, so, you know, thank you all for having me, and I wish you, you know, a good night, and, you know, good luck with all the other issues you have coming for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Moving on, just give me one moment. We're gonna move on to the next order of business, is board member comments and reports. I'm going to start with Ms. Juvenelli tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say, we serve all students in all zones. As the open houses are happening, as, there were several tonight, my grandchildren, one of them's tomorrow night. I welcome back all the teachers and the staff and the students. First day of school is Monday, and I'm excited for that. Welcome back to all the staff members gearing up for a really busy 2025, 26 year. I wanted to thank Waste Pro that was here tonight for their partnership, and I wanted to congratulate all the appointments, which I think was just one, but congratulations on that, on the new appointment. And I just wanted to thank Attorney Bruno for her patience, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juvenelli. Mr. Ribble?
Yeah, real quickly, I just wanted to congratulate our HR team again, as Shannon, Dr. Shannon Johnson was back there. There she is. Just fantastic job. I got to attend the benefits meeting on Thursday, and as we're in the, in the meeting several, twice during the meeting, the bells rang in the, in the back room, so we could, they hired two more people as I walked down the hall. So, I guess we were at 67, went to 65. I do want to comment, I like this talent acquisition scorecard that you put together, and I would like to see some measurement on that on retention. I think with the teeth we have now in the code of conduct, getting rid of the cellphones in the classrooms and hallways and on campuses, that should drive that number to get folks to stay with us and be treated by our, our staff and our students with dignity and respect. I think that's a key in moving along. And under the umbrella of HR, I did complete the mandatory learning while I was on vacation, so I got my certificates on all fourteen. So, that's all my, that's all my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Ribble. Ms. Jordan?
That was good, Mr. Ribble. I'm almost on my learning. I think I have two more to go. But, yeah, I just want to say, I really appreciate Waste Pro. Tyler called the other day and said, "How do I present this?" I invited them to come to the meeting, and they came with the backpacks. So, I just want to say thank you to Bill, Lisa, and Tyler for the backpacks for the students. Also, I just, as Ms. Juvenelli said, open house is coming. I know my grandkids are so excited about going and seeing their teachers and going to new schools and just the excitement of, we're gonna have somebody playing football this year, so I'm getting excited about that. And just welcome to everyone, you know, and what you all do. And I just wanted to say, I believe I read, because I know there was a comment made about bus drivers, I think that I had read that we, all the bus drivers are filled, every position is filled. And congratulations on that. Really appreciate that, Jared. So, yeah, that's, that's exciting to hear that. And our students are gonna be picked up, they're gonna be brought to school, and they're gonna be taken home, so thank you all for that. And I did want to share too, at the next month meeting in September, I will not be here in person, but I'll be online because I'll be in Washington. I'm going to the COSBA Federal Advocacy, and I'm going on my own. I'm paying myself, so I just want to make sure I put that out there. The district is not sending me. I am going because I believe that it's important to, to go and advocate for public education. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Mr. Persons?
Yeah, what a difference a year makes. I try to visit all the schools in my district right before school starts. I've been able to go to every one except for two, which I'll make those last two before the start of the, next Monday. But last year, we had about a hundred, just my district, we had about a hundred open teachers' positions. And I'm sure the bus, I don't have the number for how many bus drivers we needed at that time, but there is a significant number, because they're very late in the district, in the East Zone. This year, we're the full bus crew, and every teacher and principal I talked to are so excited. Principals have all said they have a certified teacher in every single classroom. So, these kids are gonna get a good education from day one. So, it's an exciting start, and I'm sure it's gonna have great results as the year goes. So, I want to put a thank you out to not only the HR team, but our transportation team and all the staff for working so hard to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. Mrs. Langford Fleming?
Yes, I know. It seems like it's been a long day. Thank you, Mr. Quick, for your partnership and, you know, getting us through this afternoon. Thank you, obviously, to Waste Pro and all of our partners that partner with the public school system in, you know, supplying any needs. We're in a, we're in a great county. There are, honestly, if you go to Publix, you go to your church, you go to your, to a football game or any other event, people are always asking how they can help. And we're very blessed to have a county that, that really does want to partner with our, with our kids. I had bus driver announcement down on my notes, so thank you for stealing my thunder, Ms. Jordan. It really is exciting. And, Jared, I commend you and your team. That's a, that's a culture shift, like, that we just saw happen right in front of us, so thank you so much. HR is on top of their game through, you know, from, from the, from 5:00 AM or whatever, I don't know what the first bus pickup is. I'm gonna guess it's around 4:30 or something crazy, but all the way until those kids get back home in the evening. So, thank you for all those efforts. Yes, our Friday Night Lights happens very soon, so that's exciting, as well as all of our fall sports. Just want to reiterate that our coaches have been working around the clock since FHSAA allows them to start practice, and I mean, they hit the pavement hard. So, thank you to our coaches, and there are so many volunteer coaches also. Thank you to the people that came out tonight. You know, we, I'll just speak for myself. I read every single email. Done some really deep diving in the last couple of weeks on the proposals that have been brought to us, so please don't think that that's fallen on deaf ears at all. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that, even though this afternoon was a taxing afternoon, talking and discussing our attorney's contract, it's, it doesn't go missed that she, she works very hard for the district and not, nothing is a personal, this is more about philosophy and belief on how contracts, in my opinion, should work. Thank you to our SRO officers, please. I'm just gonna continue to thank you so much for everything you do, and those that will keep our children safe starting on day one Monday. So, thank you to you and all of the team. Have a wonderful start to the school year, teachers, and I'm just gonna pray for safety for our students and our families. And thank you for the staff's efforts to make this kickoff a, one that the kids will never forget. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Langford Fleming. Mrs. Chaviano?
Everyone's like, hit everything. So, yes, one, thank you to Mr. Quick for your patience and all the conversations that have been had since last week to get this, to get this done today. And I do want to add and maybe request that now that we have the attorney contract done, if we can go back to the audit and put that on September, that would be wonderful, just to kind of keep things going. So, that was list. Transportation was on my list, so yes, thank you, Mr. McKinney and your team, Zero. I saw Zero, and I was like, that's awesome! And I was gonna message you, but congratulations and good job for you guys as well. HR, yes, I love getting the daily updates of like, what's happening in those numbers, and seeing what's happening in our classrooms. Yes, open house is happening. My daughter had hers this afternoon. My husband brought her. She has her shirt. She is excited. She met her teacher, so good luck at all the open houses and all the families kind of getting in there and bringing in your supplies and doing all the things. It's tax-free month-on-month for your supplies, so take advantage of that. Buy the extra supplies on the list, the extra reams of paper and the tissue and all that, because they do need it. So, so do those things, because that's always on my extra. But, yeah, to the teachers, I know you guys are doing all the things in your classroom and getting ready for kind of what's gonna happen this year, so I just, I pray for grace and patience for you guys, and lots of rest. And I'm already enacting our regular bedtime this week, because summer is almost over. Thank you. So, yes, just getting ready for the week, and good luck to our teachers next week, and that's all I have, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chaviano. Yeah, in regards to the auditor, as I'd indicated last week, I'm gonna try, I was talking about doing a special meeting in a couple of weeks, it depends on our schedule, but it also, HR had indicated there's one applicant they still hadn't heard back from that was still present. I will follow up with them, and actually I'll ask Madam Superintendent through her staff if we can just get a quick overview the next couple of days of who we currently still have as applicants. At that point, I will work with our assistants to work on scheduling something. If not, then I will go into the September meeting if that won't work, if that's good with the board. Okay? Congratulations to our board attorney, Attorney Bree Bruno as well. But I also want to say thank you to my fellow teammates up here. We definitely had some vigorous discussions and back and forth, but they're very productive. Nothing was ever personal. I appreciate us being able to go through a very difficult conversation, doing it so gracefully up here, so I appreciate that from everyone. Last thing I have is just same as everyone else, is I'm excited for this year. I'm looking forward to welcoming back, well, teachers already are back, but teachers, staff, and students on Monday. I'm excited, and with everything coming down the pike that has been acted, you know, my last words will be, let's go. Okay, Attorney Huffman?
I'm gonna excite you by saying I have no comments.
On to last but not least, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'll just echo the, the comments of our fantastic board. It's been so great to welcome back our teachers this week and our staff. Everybody's been coming back to school and super excited. I just want to take a moment also to thank our team here at the district office. You know, sometimes they're the unsung heroes, and they work very hard all summer long through the year, supporting our schools. And, you know, I made a commitment to this community when I came in to office that we would see some change, and we are starting to see that change. And I want to thank you for recognizing the changes that we're seeing. Change certainly is happening at the leadership level. When I came into office, it's no secret, we had our cabinet reapply for their jobs. Everybody that's on the team right now is because I have hired them to be there. They are committed to the work. They are committed to the priorities. And when we set ambitious goals like zero teacher vacancies, zero bus driver vacancies, they have risen to the challenge, and I just, I couldn't be prouder of our staff. And I thank each and every one of you, because you, you are the unsung heroes behind the work, and I just really appreciate that. Huge thank you and appreciation to our teachers. A lot of times, people think teachers don't work over the summer, and boy, oh, boy, do they work. Many of our teachers, so many of our teachers are, are working second jobs, and also working on their, their regular job, which is planning. You know, so many of our teachers, I can remember doing that myself, you know, coming together with my team and, and saying, "Okay, what are our plans for first quarter?" And we'd have those knocked out before the school year started. And so, just thank you to our teachers and our support staff who are returning this week. We know you've been thinking about your children. We're so excited to have you back and, and just really appreciate the work. Just want to echo also some of the comments around our secondary teachers, our new teachers back today here at the district office. They had a wonderful session on, you know, what it requires to kick off an effective school year, from classroom management to working on the standards, working on the work. So, really appreciate that as well. And tomorrow, we'll be happily welcoming back our elementary new teachers, so that's, that's really been exciting to see. We had a sponsor, Suncoast Credit Union, which I want to give a huge shout-out to. Talc also helped with sponsorship, and I'm sure there were others. So, just thank you so much. We, we live in the best community who really supports public education, and we want to say a special thank you to those sponsors. And then finally, I just want to give you a kind of a new chant. "We're on our way to an A." We are on our way to an A. That's gonna be our new mantra for this year. this year, on our way to an A. We are a B school district, fantastic, that's, that's okay. But you know my standards, we're always, we're always working harder. Now that we have our teachers filled, we're going to get our children to school on time, which you always know, the two variables, right, to increase student achievement, high-quality teacher, more time. We can put all the programs we want in front of children. Programs don't teach children. Teachers teach children. That's why it's been so important to fill those vacancies. So we're going to be moving forward on our way to an A, and that's what we're doing. Congratulations to everybody. Looking forward to a fantastic school year as we surf our way to an A. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Carlin, and that's why I'll re-echo, let's go.
Let's go.
Next scheduled meetings of the board on Tuesday, September 9th, there'll be a school board workshop at 1:00 PM, followed by a 5:05 PM fiscal year 2025, 2026 final budget meeting, followed by a school board action meeting at 6 o'clock. At this point, having no other business to come before this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:28 PM. Have a great evening.